Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Roy Asis.
Here.
Dennis M. Clark.
Here.
Becky Curtis.
Here.
Julie Osmond.
Here.
Alexandra Williams.
Here.
Next item is public participation in council. You begin in five minutes. We actually come to the podium, write down your name and address. Next, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jake Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday, Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and whereas on March eighth, twenty twenty-two, Cameron, Missouri, was once again named a Twenty Twenty One Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of its commitment to effective urban forest management and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious household by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce light-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife and whereas trees are renewable resource, give us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase the parking values and hence economic vitality of the business areas and beautify our community and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Roy Asis, Mayor of the City of Cameron, Clinton, the Kent, Baldwin Counties, Kansas, Missouri, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two as Arbor Day in the city of Cameron. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support the efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
In response to that, Tab, do you want to let us know when you're going to be doing the planting of the trees with the school?
They actually have map testing for certain grades. So we're going to actually split it up on two Fridays. This coming Friday, we're going to do, I believe it's fourth and fifth grade, and the twenty-ninth will be doing the rest of the classes. I am actually planting the kindergarten tree.
Which is the, we're on our, like, seventeenth year.
Yeah, I believe so. Not for sure on that. I did play the seventeenth year.
It started in two thousand eight. A tree called the Shingle Oak.
I didn't mind.
What?
A shingle oak.
Can you spell that word, please? A shingle.
What did I say?
No, I'm sure that's what you said.
Oh, okay. That's dominated by Matt's empty notes.
Will anybody else like to add anything to the order? Moving on, next on the agenda is a consent agenda. Would anybody like to move anything off the consent agenda at this time? Any motion? Seeing none? I will now open for nominations to pass the consent agenda. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the April fourth, twenty twenty-two regular session. Item B, motion to approve the minutes of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-two special session. Item C, motion to approve a pro-graded liquor license, May and June, for Love's Travel Stop for Original Package and Sunday Original Package license present. Item D, motion to approve annual liquor license renewals for Casey's York, Original Package and Sunday Original Package. Casey's Sound, Original Package and Sunday Original Package. Third Street Fusion, five percent by drink wine. Love's Travel Stop, Original Package and Sunday Original Package. And Wright Choice, Original Package and Sunday Original Package.
Do I have motion to pass or consent agenda as written?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of passing the consent agenda? Please verify this. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next on the agenda is appointments. We have the code appeal, appeal opponent. Now, do any of you need to take this up for a nomination for individual?
I think the policy just keep going to do it for the interim city council member, just go through the person that's on the list and we give a day's amendment.
Okay.
But, but can I add something? Would you explain to them why this committee has to have alternates?
Um, the board, the code board of appeals does indicate two alternates, and we don't have enough applicants to fill two alternates. But I believe the reason why they have that on there was so if we, if the people who are members of the board would have an issue coming for the board, they can review themselves and have an alternate second. That was my interpretation. Was that yours?
Yes.
And you only have a three-member board. Two people being gone means you don't have a quorum, so having alternates is always very important in that small board or commission.
So our first person on our list is Clint Lovejoy for one of the five board members. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Three, two opposed, or three opposed, two in favor. Darlene Bradenridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Five in favor, zero opposed. Gina Reid Hibler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, oh, all opposed, same time. None opposed, five in favor. Juliana Arndt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Five in favor, zero opposed. Sue Mannion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. I don't think favorite, zero opposed. Barry Traydar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same time. Five in favor, zero opposed. For the place of an alternate on this board. Not sure if that's better to do that. Okay, so what do we need to leave it open for?
You could leave the two alternate spots open and request applications to serve as alternates at this point, and those could come back before the city council, once the applications have been received.
Okay. Is there any nominations for an alternate? I'm going to give everybody a free shot. To this board.
Okay. They have to submit an application and have submitted the acknowledgement for the code, um, for the company.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is the city manager report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I had two things on the printed on there and three additional things that have come up since then. First of all, of course, I remind everybody that we're having a retirement ceremony for Paul Beckwith here on this Wednesday at noon in the council chambers here. I would invite everyone to come to that and see the retirement ceremony and we won't say farewell to Paul because he's here, but in the city, but it will be his last day on the job as a city employee. The next thing is I know that we have a tentative bond placing for Genwick sometime in the week of April twenty-fifth, but work out the details on this. These things are kind of moving forward on a day-to-day basis, so I asked Zach Johnson to give us the current update of the last couple of days.
Yes. Um, again, we are, we are moving closer towards the preliminary bond closing. That last week in April, there were a few items left to take care of. We've been working with Bank and West to set up a bank account there for the construction account. Um, we're finalizing a lot of the easement process and easement map and those things. Again, we're, we're kind of down to the short rows and we're just knocking off some of the requirements for USDA to, 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 to close the bonds and, and be able to begin construction. After we have the preliminary bond closing, then we'll issue the notice to proceed to the contractors and they'll be able to get started. So again, we're just down to the end to checking off just a few of the last, last remaining requirements.
Very good. Thank you very much. The next item I have, I've talked to council members about it, and that is a council retreat for strategic planning for the next three to five years. And what we're looking at is a date sometime in June, and this is all very tentatively, but I'm going to ask you for Thursday or Friday, the sixteenth to the seventeenth of June, and you can all others know if those dates would work for you, or if you have some other dates. We also tentatively plan on doing that at the Elms, as we've done it before. And the third item on that is a facilitator. I've asked MML for some recommendations, and I have some recommendations for some people in the Kansas City area, which would be much easier for us. And when I have got some of them who said that they might be willing to do it, I'll bring them back to you so we can make a decision on who, who you might want to have as a facilitator of that. So we're in progress. We're figuring that out. As we get more details, I'm going to let you know, but right now, we'd like to know the dates that we're planning. Looking at sixteen and seventeen June, so if you look at that, let us know. Those are weekdays, Thursday and Friday.
You said fifteen and sixteen.
I mean sixteen and seventeen, Thursday and Friday.
Is it just going to be one and the other? It's not going to be both of these?
Right, it'll just be one date, correct? I'm just trying to narrow this down, see what might work. And if that doesn't work, we'll try another date, but we'll try that in charge. Okay, and the next thing, we had a great visit from Hunter Kelly, who is the regional director for Senator Josh Hawley. He came and visited us and wanted to know what things we might want to talk about that would be on, could be on the senator's list of things he'd like to know about. I left you a note on the desk. He sent us back a nice note from Senator Hawley's office. When he visited here, we talked some length about the water line from St. Joe, which is a big item. We also took him out to the lakes and looked at the lakes, the Great Lakes of Cameron, because that's another item that we're working on and might be of attention to, to come into the senator's list of things he might want to know about. We talked about another number of other things. We want to get those things on his list, and so he said he would take those back to us and at least we'll have those projects in maybe on the US Senate list. Uh, and finally, I wanted to talk about Reservoir Road. I know there was recently another serious accident at the intersection inside Trace at thirty-sixth, and the chief of police has been working on that. But I did want to let you know that we're continuing to work that because we're working a long-term plan to have a overpass there where would now be Reservoir Road and an airport road, and we're in the process of working to acquire property south of the airport. So that would be a, an overchain, change which then would service the lakes and the reservoir, and then we could eliminate that after crossing it in that trace, which continues to be a problem. As a relation, we'll continue to work on that. It's a slow process, but working on it. And that concludes my report, Mayor, unless you have some questions for me.
City, do you have questions for?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, it's time for this business. We have a second and files, reading of Bill twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Bill twenty twenty-two dash eleven, an ordinance in section one eleven, names of appeal of the property named Cameron of the City of Cameron, Missouri.
Do I have a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash eleven?
Some move.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Anyone have any discussion on this? Seeing none?
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexandra Williams.
Yes.
Roy Asis.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have a first reading of Bill twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. And Mayor, I will need to refuse myself as my life is to conduct that panel. Thank you very much.
Bill twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the City of Cameron, Missouri to enter into a contract with the Cameron Municipal Bank.
Chair will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash sixteen on the first reading.
Some move. Second.
Discussion. One quick note on that. Mayor, you will see in your packet is a, that's a list of the events that they will be including this year, uh, which will continue much like it has the past year. And I would note that when you looked at our fiscal report for the quarter, in one area which is not very much spent is the band has only gone one percent of their budget because, of course, they haven't had a season this year, did not have much of a season last year. So there are one area in which, at least for the time being, there's certainly plenty of money for them to continue to operate. I have been in contact with Ann Clark, and we don't have any questions on this. I think this is pretty same, much the same as we've done in the past years. And you'll see the events that they're planning on doing in action back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-two dash sixteen on first reading? Please verify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four in favor, zero opposed?
One in.
One. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a full reading of Bill twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
Bill twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, an ordinance of the City of Cameron, Missouri approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the Great Northwest Wholesale Water Commission.
Chair will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. For a first reading, we got to do it twice, correct? For a first reading.
Some move.
Sorry.
Going to move to the second. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, what you have before you is an ordinance authorizing the Great Northwest Wholesale Water Commission to issue the bonds. Uh, they will be issuing revenue bonds to, to pay for the construction of the project. Um, and again, this, this ordinance is just authorizing the approval of the commission to move forward with that.
Anyone have any questions?
And again, we are asking for two readings tonight because, again, we are planning a, a closing here at that end of the month. So that's why the reason for the two readings tonight.
Thanks again. Um, all in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-two dash seventeen on the first reading? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Five in favor, zero opposed? You stopped that one motion, correct? Chair will entertain a notice of motion.
Suspend the rule.
To suspend the rules and pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash seventeen for a second reading. Auto call.
Some move.
Sorry.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexandra Williams.
Yes.
Roy Asis.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. Chair will entertain a notion, a motion, a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution for the City of Cameron, Missouri to accept a proposal for strategic government resources meeting.
Chair will entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
Some move. Second.
Going to move to the second. Discussion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, as you know, we've used SGR in the past, and we have before you a proposal from them to do the recruitment for our Public Works Director. As you know, that's a very difficult position. We want to get the very best person we can in that position. I've also included there a picture, a biography of Kirk Hodgins, who is the recruiter who's been assigned for this, and I show you that biography and the picture uh, because that is, and our new Kirk Davis, I think now, since Kirk Davis has resigned and has retired. And one of the things that Kirk Hodgins has done is he has been both a city manager and a director of public works. And SGR believes he would be the right person to do this recruitment for us. Questions?
Do we not have anybody in the city or on staff that is capable of doing this job?
We do, and we have a one person in the city who has said that they would like to submit their application, and our acting director of public works would like to also submit his application. We'll certainly encourage both of those to do that.
Would it be best to maybe have them submit their applications first and interview them first so that we might not necessarily have to do this? I mean, because it is at a cost of what? Is it twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
Is that it?
Okay.
One eighty-four thousand nine hundred.
Uh, yes.
Is that possible?
Yes, that certainly is possible. And one of the reasons why we would do a national search is so that we have a large number of people to compare that with as well.
We have questions?
Um, I see where you're absolutely coming from, because you can save that money if you can. The question is, I guess, are we able to make that educated decision?
Well, I understand what Manager Raskuson is saying. Um, would there be any reason why we couldn't compare him to the previous, or him or her that we can reach to the previous, um, Public Works Director? I mean, he was here quite a while, and so obviously did a good job while he was here.
Sure, that, that is always an option to hire somebody internally or locally. Uh, and as opposed to, however, being able to get a national search and be able to look at all the different people you may have. When you only have a couple of people locally, you, you say, kind of ask, compared to what? And what this does is this allows you to have a professional recruitment firm go and give all the options, and they will come down, they'll probably find a list of ten. So when we ask you, compared to what, we're able to compare, and for a large, an important position like this, I might recommend that we be able to do as large a search as we possibly can.
Is there any in the bills that we should probably take this to a committee or a different session, or can we do that?
We kind of are.
So all in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time?
Nay.
Four in favor, one opposed?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, I know that sounds like an awful lot of money, and I'm not one to spend that in the future, especially on, on, um, getting it, but we also used SGR to get our current city manager, and that was a lovely experience, very lovely experience. We really, we really enjoyed it. You're the one that was there.
Yeah, I was, it was exciting.
It was. And there were people from neighboring cities, I mean, they were locals, and, and then they're warm, and so it was, I, I did trust them. I believe you. And then, what, you're going to be making the first decision, right?
Yes.
You will be making that decision.
It's not that I don't trust them, it's just that I think maybe we ought to talk to those people first. I'm not saying not to use them. I'm just saying maybe we ought to talk to the, you know, local people first.
Yeah, for your information, I have talked to both of those people, and both of them are great people, could do a great job, but as compared to what can we get? Can we get the very best choice we've got? And when we say that it is my decision that the city manager will hire that position, but I would not do it without letting all of you fully involved in what was going on and letting you know before we make any decisions.
And this is one person that a lot of money from the city flows through. So I understand the importance of getting the right person. On the flip side, if we spend all this money and go through the big search and we end up hiring one of ours, we're going to feel pretty bad.
Maybe not sound, but just still accommodate another person.
That is what I would say. We feel confident we've done a full search and hired the best person we've got.
Hopefully, you wouldn't feel that at least on the search. Any others? Next item on the agenda is for personal property tax abatements.
This is an annual housekeeping thing. The list that was presented to you are personal property taxes that are two thousand and eighty or older. I compare the list of taxes that we have with the DeKalb County and the Clinton County personal property tax list. The names on this list are they have not had active taxes. They don't, they no longer have active taxes in either of those counties. So, um, they're either deceased, they moved away, whatever, and the D and D's taxes, personal taxes, are flexible. And the total for this year on that this abatement list is twelve thousand seven hundred ninety-five, um, which is less than the last two years. We are slowly abating this list. Not just with abatements, but also, um, we do get some of these paid, not very many, but we do get some of these paid after we send the current real estate tax list to Clinton County after we go through this process and certify the taxes. And she has said that from that point forward, if she finds people on our list that do come down to pay taxes to them, she will not accept the taxes until they come back to us first, which is, is new. So we appreciate that. So all I need from this is a motion, a second, and a vote to approve the abatement.
Chair will entertain a motion to accept the personal property tax abatement. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the personal property tax abatements?
Yes.
Summate.
Second. Any more discussion?
A lot of them are rentals, and they were short, short timers, and some addresses.
And they don't go away forever, right? If they were to try to come back, they'd still, it's not on their return photo.
So all in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passed?
All right. Next, we have certified delinquent taxes. Um, the list, or the couple of others that I have, shows the history of, it's basically the delinquent taxes on the day that was presented to council since 2019. So those taxes totals aren't actually going down quite this. I only have a handful of real estate taxes that are still due from the city just filling in 2018 and before. There's a small, tiny parcel that's basically a ditch in the Cat County that those came up for years. And nobody wants to, I don't think they get those taxes. But I have, I have five or six properties in Clinton County that we have foregone the continuation of tax penalties on those properties. Instead, we have leased those properties. So at some point in the future, someone will buy those properties and we will get our tax money on those listed properties. Everything that the counties have been billing, they are taking care of the collections of those. So basically, all I've been living is, or all I track of like is the 2018 and before. And they're doing a much better job of collecting those, which is saying you do have to go pay your personal property taxes to major properties. And we didn't have anything to, no, to, yes. We weren't collecting about 88% of our personal property taxes when we were doing it, and they're doing closer to 90%. So, um, the total delinquent taxes after the abatement this year is 65,107. That's total taxes of all years. So that is going down significantly over the past several years. And just one, the other, I just need a motion signed and a vote to certify those taxes.
Chair will entertain a motion to certify those real estate and personal property taxes. So.
Second.
Then move to the second. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All in favor, you're opposed? Next item on the agenda is a full reading of Bill 2022-18.
Bill 2022-18, an ordinance declaring the results of the public election held in the city of Cameron, Missouri on 5 April 2022, on the question of whether the city shall vote a local use tax on out-of-state purchases at a rate equal to the rate of the local sales tax in effect in the city.
Chair will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2022-18 on a first reading.
Summate.
Second. Then move to the second. Discussion.
The election did fail, and we just have a ministerial duty to defer those exceptions.
Anyone have any questions or more discussion on this? All in favor of passing Bill 2022-18 on a first reading? Do you see, if I, I say a nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Five in favor, you're opposed? Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill 2022-18 for a second reading.
Summate.
Second.
Julie Osmos.
Yes.
Alexandra Williams.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is a public participation with the council.
Good evening. I'm Gina Reid from 24th and 5th Street. I'm also here on behalf of the Cameron Municipal Ban. Uh, we just want to express how appreciative we are of the city, of all the people in the city, of the city council, city employees, the people who are so nice, for supporting the ban. This is the 156th season of bans in Cameron. We contrast that with Marching Museum, which is the 137th district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the reading. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none? Next item is missing comments from the staff. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay then.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I sent out a invite for, to, for the council to tour the aquatic facility, Aquatic Center, April, or May 16th at 5:00 PM. Kind of a partnership with the park board and, and staff to, to meet down there. And Karothers will be there along with NPR, that's managing pool this year. So please come out.
That'll be right ahead of the council.
Yeah, right ahead of the council meeting, so. They'll be there to answer any questions or just look around and it's kind of a pre-soft opening kind of event. Also to kind of piggyback on what Tab was discussing, the Arbor Day celebration. Um, if you've never been, it'd be a good opportunity to go. The one with Parkview is actually April 29th. And we're planting the shingle oak at 9:30. It's, every year it's a kindergarten class that we actually plant trees. So if you haven't been, it's, it'll be over kind of between the, the San Boladog Court and the pool. And that's where we're going to plant this year's trees. So if you can make it 9:30 on the 29th, correct? Follow.
Nancy Steve? Tim, Ben?
No.
Steve Patrick? Dan? Carmen? Zach?
I, I think it definitely goes, saying like, so put Shelley on the spot here, but Shelley was selected to be on the board of directors for Merman. I, I think that's a, that's quite an accomplishment and definitely needs to be, to be noted.
Counselor? Nothing. Congratulations. Missing comments from the council, baby?
Aye.
Uh, just again, congratulations to the park. Uh, this is a very nice honor and it's just, again, wider recognition of her competence. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Alex?
Well, congratulations, Shelley, again. Hope everyone had a happy Easter and has a good Arbor Day.
Um, I would just like to thank Gina Reid internally, oh, there you are. For the nice article that we put in the paper. I got basically entered our city council member. I don't think a lot of people realize just how hard it is to sit up here and make the decisions that we do and that we just don't do it, you know, by the seat of our pants, I guess. Because I'm calling myself out of the seat of my pants, my seat, my pants, my girl, but. Uh, and so we, I really do appreciate that because it is a lot harder than it seems when you guys are sitting out there and we're sitting up here. So, thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina. I just want to say that you've got major programs going on. You've got the water lines coming in. You've got the pool hopefully getting finished on time. The city park, it took a lot of people in this room, and I wasn't one of them, to make all that happen. And you guys do deserve it. Congratulations. There's a lot of stuff going on in our wonderful little town, and it takes people to get that stuff down. Thank you. Um, next item is executive session, attorney-client communications. Um, I don't even, that's a roll call, isn't it?
Attorney-client communications, real estate and personal.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to move into the executive session. I will.
Summate.
Second.
Alexandra Williams.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmos.
Yes.